We're real life.
The Chair notes the time is six o'clock. I call this meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge. As ZBA Chair, I want to welcome everyone to the meeting. We'll begin with the roll call of the ZBA members and panel for this meeting. Steve Judge is present. Mr. Craig Meadows.
Present.
Mr. Everell Henry.
Present.
Mr. Philip White.
Present.
Mr. David Sloveter.
Present.
The quorum is present. Also attending the public hearing tonight is Jacinta Williams, a planner with the town. And we have an attendance also attorney Carolyn Murray of KP Law, who provides us guidance and assistance in this matter. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Act of 2021 and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted via remote meetings. Members of the public who wish to observe the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter 48 of the general laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town Bamhurst. In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, in Article 10, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst zoning bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to parties at interest. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff, and they may be viewed via the town of Amherst's YouTube channel and the ZBA webpage. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or for additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the Chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raised hand function on their screen or by pressing star nine on their phone. The Chair, with the assistance of the staff, will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition is heard by the board, is distinct and evaluated on its own merits, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has 90 days from the close of the hearing to file a decision. For a variance, the board has 100 days from the date of filing to file its decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with a relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the registry of deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda: approval of minutes, approval of meeting minutes from September 19th, 2024, September 26th, 2024, and October 10th, 2024. A public hearing on ZBA FY 2023-18 ASD Schutzbury MA Solar LLC requests for a special permit under Section 3.340 of the zoning bylaw to construct a 9.35 megawatt DC 4.4 megawatt AC ground-mounted solar voltaic array spanning 41 acres on a 102-acre site with accompanying battery storage at three parcels of land owned by WD Cows Inc., identified as MAP 9B Parcels 11 and 12, MAP 9D Parcel 27 on Schutzbury Road, RO Outline Residence Zoning District. Frontage and access to the subject parcels of land are located between 187 and 201 Schutzbury Road. This matter is continued from July 25th, 2024. And ZBA FY 2025-04 Wayfinders Inc. requests a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40B, to construct a 31-unit mixed-income rental housing in a three-story development with 14 proposed parking spots on the premises of 31 Southeast Street, MAP 15A Parcel 20 in the RVC Village Center Residence Zoning Districts, and a 47-unit mixed-income rental housing in a three-story building with 46 proposed park, I think it's supposed to be 47, but 46 proposed parking spots on the premises of 70 Belcher Town Road, MAP Parcel 15C 58, 15C 59, 15C 60 in the RN and FPC Neighborhood Residents and Flood Prone Conservancy Zoning Districts. This is continued from October 27th, 2024. Following that, we have a general public comment period to discuss any matters not before the board tonight and other business not anticipated within the last 48 hours, and none adjournment. So the first item on the agenda is consideration of minutes from September 19th, 2024. I've reviewed the minutes of September 19th. I have one note, I think, on this, on the, yeah, I have one note on this. Jacinta, there was a, on the eighth page, under plumbing, there's a, the second item is storm drainage dash connecting to, and then it ends. And so I think there has to be a connecting to something, and I'm just not sure what that is.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that it's gotta be storm drainage connecting to the storm management plan drainage site, but I'm not sure. So that has to be corrected.
Okay.
You know what that is, of chance?
No, I wouldn't. I'd have to go back to look at the meeting minutes or the transcription to verify what it is.
Well, I, I have enough confidence that you can do that and accurately, accurately record for the minutes what that is. Is there, are there any other items on the September 19th minutes that people had concerns or corrections about? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from September 19th with the, and give the staff the permission to make the technical change to reflect the discussion regarding storm drainage systems connections. Do I have such a motion? I, I hear, I see Craig nodded yes, and Mr. Sloveter waved yes, so that's a.
Well, he didn't know he was muted. Had he, had he not been muted, he would have said so moved. This is the sign for so moved.
Your interpretation is right on.
Okay, right. We got that. We got sign language moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And I would take closed mouths as a sign that there's no discussion. So in that, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the minutes as amended with technical changes from the staff, technical performance changes from the staff. The Chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Sloveter?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Motion carries five to nothing. Minutes are approved as amended. Second set of minutes is from September 26th, 2024. I've reviewed those minutes. And I found nothing. Does anybody have any questions about the minutes from September 26th, 2024? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted from September 26th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the minutes from September 26th, 2024. The Chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Sloveter?
Aye.
And Mr. Henry?
Aye.
All right, the last set before us is the minutes from October 10th, 2024. There is one, I think, additional area. Again, this, these are two that I think you, Ms. Williams, I think that there are two that you want to finish the sentence on. If we look at the page, page seven, it asks, the Chair wants to make sure it's financially feasible for the town. The Chair asked what the risk is of them taking on the project. Then there's Ehrlich response, and I see you've noted the time when Mr. Ehrlich responded. And it's the same thing for the next one, about whether utilities are not included. Again, we had the time for that response, but it's just not listed, or it's not described in these minutes. And I can tell you, I'm sure that that's what you intended to do. So again, I think that if you would, we could either wait and have this done later or give you the authority to make those changes by describing what discussion took place in those time periods, 147, 48, and 156, 10.
There are also some other highlighted sections I had questions about as well.
Sure, what are they, Mr. Henry?
I think on my, it's page five, at the top of page five, there's some highlights.
All right. Let's see. Top of page five. Oh, I don't have any highlights, but what, what's the description of the, or what's the language?
Applicant needs to provide chart comparing inspections.
Yep. Oh, I see. Yep.
And then fourth line down, Henry asked Ms. Williams to look into whether or not they're in provisions. Those are all highlighted on mine.
Me too.
Here's true.
Yep, they're highlighted in mine.
Yes.
Well, we should.
So the highlights are for, that's, these were some things that were taken during the meeting, and that's just my way of keeping track of what we were asking for. That's why they're highlighted. I just didn't remove them.
Okay.
All right. So the highlights will be removed for the official, official minutes?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions or concerns? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes, removing the highlights and describing the conversation on page seven, where we have the minutes notated and the time noted.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion. Chair votes aye. Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Sloveter?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Next order of business is ZBA FY 2023-18 ASD Schutzbury MA Solar LLC. Do I understand that the applicant wishes to continue this matter and that we have a communication to that effect from the applicant's representative?
We do, but I'm looking for Tom, and I'm not seeing him.
Well, if we have his letter.
Yes, we do.
And the date that I think you mentioned to me was January 28th?
January 23rd.
January 23rd. All right. That date works for me. But what I would like to do is give people a chance. We also have another, let's see, it's myself, Mr. Meadows, Mr. Sloveter, and Mr. Henry are all on this panel, if I'm correct. Mr. White, you're not on the ASD Schutzbury. That's right. And we only have four members on this panel. So are you, can you guys commit to that date, or do you want us to, do you want some time to think about it and adjust your schedule and then get back and pick a date at a later point in time?
I'm muted. I'm, right now, I'm available on the 23rd. I don't see any reason that I can't make it. So I can, I can commit to the 23rd for now.
As can I.
About you, Mr. Meadows?
You're muted, Mr. Meadows.
I realize, but I was looking at my calendar, and I am free.
Okay. So let's, let's put that, let's move to continue the Schutzbury Road till the 23rd of January at six o'clock.
Okay.
All right. So do I have a motion to that effect, to continue this matter till the 23rd at six o'clock?
So moved.
With audio.
So moved and seconded to continue to the January 23rd. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, the vote occurs on the motion to continue the matter until January 23rd. Chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Sloveter?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Great. So continue till the 23rd. I want to note the presence of Nate Malloy on the call as well, senior planner for the town. All right, the next order of business is ZBA FY 2025-04 Wayfinders Inc. requesting a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B, to construct 31 mixed-income rental units in a three-story development with 14 proposed parking spots on 31 Southeast Street and 47 units mixed-income rental housing at 70 Belcher Town Road. So we had some questions and requests for materials from the applicant, and I'd like to go through those, that first, what they submitted. And then what I'd like to do is return to the, to examine the waiver requests that they have. I know there's been some further discussion with town staff on waiver requests. And what I'd like to do is work through the waiver requests as much as possible in a public hearing so that we can have back and forth from the applicant, not move into the public meeting for that. Tentatively approve those waivers that we are comfortable with. Those that we aren't, we'll set aside for a later point in time. See if we can get through that. And then I'd like to do the same, beginning with the conditions. Now, there's 100, almost 100 conditions that the staff has come up with, and so I don't think we can do all of that. We're not going to be able to do all of that tonight, obviously. So, but I'd like to do the same thing. The notion is, let's work through these waivers and conditions in a public hearing so we can have back and forth with the applicant, and then we'll move into the public meeting portion when we decide to make the final decision on those ideas, and we can move expeditiously through them in the public hearing after having back and forth with, with the applicant. Does that work for everybody, and is that an understandable process for the members of the board? Great. Does that work for the applicant as well? Mr. Gruber?
We, yes, we, we can, we can work through the waivers this evening. We received the, 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 the conditions just earlier in the week, and I mean, I guess we can see where we get to with the waivers, and we have not, we had not had a chance to review those on our end. We can certainly start the, you know, discussion on those as far as a working, but.
So you're talking about, you, you just got the conditions earlier this week?
Correct, yes.
All right. The waivers we had before that?
Yeah, the waivers are, yes.
Okay, so then I guess we will, first, let's proceed with the submitted material from the last meeting and any questions that we had. And I want to make sure that we have the people representing the applicant introduce themselves, Mr. Gruber. And you're, I, I apologize, I forgot.
Ellen Fryman, sorry.
Attorney Fryman.
I changed the label on my box. Rename, okay, I'm doing that right now.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Mr. Gruber, give us your name and address for the record.
Sure. It's James Gruber, a project manager in the real estate development department, representing Wayfinder, 1780 Main Street, Springfield, Massachusetts.
And Ms. Fryman?
Address is 1441 Main Street, Springfield, Massachusetts.
I do want to go through the submissions that are provided by the, by the applicant as well as by the town. We received presentation slides from October 17th hearing. There was, there was a request to have the slides that were actually presented at the meeting, and they did that. There is a lighting plan revision for both 31 Southeast Street and the 70 Belcher Town Road sites. Those were submitted 11/7. Refrigerant piping memo by AKAL Engineering submitted on the 7th of November. A typical sign detail was also submitted on 11/7, 2024. From the staff, we received Belcher Town Road waiver requests submitted 11/8, 2024. 31 Southeast Street waiver requests submitted 11/8, 24. Draft conditions with revisions from 11/8, 2024. And just today, we got a, I think, a marketing plan, affirmative marketing plan from the applicant as well. Those are the materials that I have. Are there any other submissions, Ms. Williams, that I should note?
No, I think you, you listed them all.
Okay. So the, the first thing is the presentation slides.
Mr. Chair, if I may interrupt for a second?
Absolutely.
I, I did not see that marketing plan.
Oh, it just, it just came in about an hour before an email that I, I received about an hour ago. There was a mark, an affirmative marketing plan. It's about 11 pages. And it was attached to an email that I think Mr. Malloy first sent, and then Ms. Williams resent it.
Okay, I, I found it. Thank you.
Got it? Okay.
Yes.
So I mean, I, I think we can look at that, but it's come at the last minute, so we can't make a decision authoritatively tonight, but we can at least talk about it, and they can describe it. So we, we did have presentation slides. Did anybody have any questions regarding that? I think that just wanted, it was just supposed to help us understand the proposal. All right. No question about the slides. The lighting plan for both 31 and 70 Belcher Town Road. Does this involve, I mean, one of the questions that I had with the lighting plan, the previous lighting plan, it was just really hard to read. What the, and even the printed version is still hard to read, but it seems to me that this was supposed to be in response for the questions about light trespass to other properties on the Southeast Street site, to, I guess it would be to the left of the building. Is that what, is that what reflects as a change to this, to the area to the left of the building, the neighboring property? Or did you make change, this guy described, you made changes?
Sure, sure, Mr. Chair. Yes, and, and I'm happy to share my screen, and I can, and I, maybe I can pan and, and show where some of those, describe some of the. Here we go. So, yeah, and here is the, here is the Southeast Street site. And we did, we did make some changes. At this site, the, the, the areas of concern were that there was some sort of some, you know, some very bright areas here with the, you know, with the, with the numbers on them being, you know, in excess of, of seven foot candles and that in, in, in higher than, you know, anticipated areas like this here where there were two lights. We had our lighting designer relook at everything to minimize any light trespass, you know, along the property line and provided these updated drawings that show the, you know, the average, the average areas in a, in a more detailed manner as far as the entryway, the parking, you know, areas and the, in discussions with the lighting consultant and the design firm, the architect, a 0.1, 0.1 is one tenth of the light that a T-light would emit from about a foot away. So that is considered generally as an, it's my understanding that's considered generally as an industry standard as, you know, not, it's, it's sort of minimal trespass, like the, my understanding that is like between point one and point five is anything above that would be considered light trespass, but anything below that is, is not. So this site, we didn't really, there wasn't, there wasn't a concern at this site. There's a fence along the property line here, and you know, the lights are all downcast, and they have guards on them, so when you look up at the lights, you don't see the light. You know, the emitting light, and it also helps so that it can control where the light is cast. So the 31 Southeast Street was updated for that, and it's a, you know, more, more uniform lighting on the driveway area. And then at 70 Belcher Town Road, the previous plan showed the light trespass, that this is the property line here is in red, and the concern was that the, there was, there was light trespass onto the abutting property here. Our lighting designer did the same thing with the statistics that are shown here to, you know, better delineate what the averages were and what the maximums and min's were in each section, and was also able to adjust the, the lighting so that we're at a 0.1 anywhere where it goes over the property line. I had sent this, this plan to the neighbor as requested by the board. I reached out to them. I, I sent them a plan and email, and then I followed up, you know, a few days later with a phone call. I have not heard anything back from them on this.
Okay.
So, and that was in response to the board's.
We had asked you to do that. Thank you.
Yes.
Can I, can we go back to 31 Southeast Street?
Yes.
So the red area in front, I guess that'd be east, the red, where all those red markers are.
Here.
Yeah, no, right in front of the, the stairs.
Yes.
So all the way up, I can't see my cursor, but for the, the, the old building, there's the stairs that go up, and that area is all, is that highly lit because that's?
Yeah, it's my understanding, these are dimmable lights, and these are a, an XE, which is the, let's see if it's, it's on here. They did not put the, the can type light or the, like a recessed light in, so it's just a, a recessed light here in the ceiling that projects down.
Okay, and then in front on the ground, where we have the plus seven, plus five, plus five, down, but in front of the stairs, so towards the street. Is that, are those well lit, or is that low light? Just, it looks to me like that's well lit.
Yes, the stairs are, are well lit.
Stairs are well lit, and the pad in front of it, which is the, this area is.
Yeah, the patio.
Patio, and that's, is that, that won't be lit 24-hour, 24/7, right? Is that something that'll be lit when in use, or is that lit all the time?
It's, it's lit per the building code, per, you know, per egress requirements, and then it, I, it's, I can get the exact numbers that it does go down to in a, in a, you know, in a dimmable state when it's not, when it's not activated, so like motion activated to, you know, reduce, reduce the light when, you know, in the evening when someone's not there.
Okay. Will you, please keep us informed if you get a response from the neighbor on the Belcher Town Road site?
Okay.
Are there any questions about the lighting plan? All right. The next response was on the refrigerant piping memo by AKAL Engineering. Mr. Meadows, I know you had some interest in this and some concern. You probably are better at describing this or analyzing the, the the document than, than I am. So is this satisfy your request?
It, it does satisfy my request. The, the length, pipe lengths look like they're in in line with what the, the recommended piping is with Mitsubishi. I did have a couple of questions. If, if you could look further down in that memo. There were some areas that were, well, I can't, it's too small now, that were marked in, with red highlights. Highlights. Sorry, but I can't see them now. If you could just ask the engineer what those. Those, the meaning of those are.
Um, yeah.
See them right now?
Uh, let me see. It would. Ms. Ms. Williams be able to see if there's a, the Anthony Gray in the. Audience and and promote them to a panelist?
Yes, he's coming into the meeting, one moment.
Okay, thank you. Was it, was it in this, in this area here on?
It was.
Like in this portion of it? Not these red areas.
I'm trying to see where it was, my, my engineer who looked at it just wanted to know what those. Indicated. And, and then if you could just tell us what. Accommodations you've made in case there are leaks in the system at all. There's a, there's a great deal of refrigerant in those pipes. And one of the concerns I've always got with this type of piping is that if you got a leak, you've got a problem.
Yeah, so every circuit.
So Mr. Gray, Mr. Gray, just give us your name and address for the record and then continue.
Oh, yeah, this, Anthony Gray with AKL Engineering, I'm the mechanical engineer on the project. So all of these systems have are are valved at the branch box. So if there, if there is a leak, it's only gonna be like in a certain segment. Of of the piping system, it's not like the whole refrigerant. Of the whole system is going to leak out in in that area. So we do have have that, you know. Be beyond that, the code, the code based on this type of system, the code doesn't require us to put any specific leak detection. In in, in this system. If that's something that you guys want us to look at, we certainly can do that. But, you know, our our system right now is is gonna be designed per code, which doesn't require. Any refrigerant leak detection for this type of system.
I think it would be a good idea to take a look and see if you can determine if you can manage to get leak detection in.
Sure, we can, we can look at it, I will say that it's not, it's not typical, but certainly we can look at it, it's atypical.
Thank you.
And were you able to locate where those, where those areas were that your engineer had a question on and and maybe we can?
I'll give her a call during the break and see if. She can tell me where that is.
Any other discussion regarding the? The memo on the piping and the refrigerant? For the HVAC system? All right, and Mr. Meadows, if you do get additional information, we can, we obviously can return to this topic at a later point.
Thank you.
And then we had, you sent us a sign detail as well, so. Is that the sign, this, it has, there it is, is that? What you intend to use or is that just? You know, a placeholder for what? What you may or may not use and just a placeholder, can you tell us?
Yeah, that's, that's generally the sign would would be, you know, similar to this, we we do not have a sign. Design, but this is, this would be similar and along the lines that our marketing department would typically. Design something generally like this at our other developments, so this is a placeholder, there is a sort of a. I guess a symbol or an icon, you know, for the development and then the development name. Would be located here with the, you know, with the address.
Okay, so the design of the actual, the lettering and logo on the, on the board may vary. But the sign, the shape and the size is what you would like for a permanent sign, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then when we. So for your sign plan. I don't know, this this would have to be included in your sign plan and then, Ms. Williams, we'd wanna say something to the effect that. The sign comports with that in the sign plan and allowing minor changes. To be approved, minor changes, including the, you know, the, the actual words on the, and name of the. Development can be approved by the building commissioner, if you feel it's minimal. Or any changes to that can be approved by the building commissioner, if you feel this minimal, is what I would, how I would approach this. Not requiring you to come back to us with another sign design if this type of sign is what the board approves. Does that make sense, Mr. Gruber?
Yes.
Okay, any concerns from board members about, there'd be one sign like this for permanently in front of each. On each site, and then there are provisions for temporary signs for during construction, that's in the conditions, but. But this is your per, your two permanent signs would be these, right?
That, that's correct, yes.
All right. And then lastly. I think that's, that is what, lastly was the. The marketing plan that we received late today. And do you wanna run, do you wanna run through that with us? Or is this something that we should, you want us to? And I'd like to see what the board thinks too as well, it's eleven pages, it's pretty detailed, I haven't had a chance to to review it. Is there something that you wanted to talk a little bit about and give us a night, an overview, but I don't think we'd be prepared to. Approve it or discuss it, discuss it in great depth today because we just haven't had a chance to review it. So most agree, why don't you give us an up, you know, an overview and then any. Questions that people have we can answer, but knowing that we'll have to go back and look at it at a later point.
Um, yeah, so the, the affirmative fair marketing, you know, housing plan that was submitted, I was. Is a sample and is something similar and was submitted after, you know, the meeting where where we dis- discussed that. And generally, it's reviewed by the funding agencies. Then they all, every, you know, they 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 review that to make sure that it's in, you know, in conformance with, with their their requirements. So it is one of those things, I'm happy to go over that with you, the. If if there's any questions on it, you know, and, but it's.
So it's not something you're gonna have, it's not something you're gonna have finalized when. By the time we complete the comprehensive permit because it has to be approved by the funding, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and there's a, yes, and there's a lot of back and forth that goes in, in in that, that gets tweaked and changed. Many, many times in the course of the financial closing process leading up until the construction and that's not finalized typically until. We we close on the, on 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 the development, on the project, the financial closing.
And you'd be required to submit the final approved. Marketing plan to the town, if I'm correct, if I read the conditions correctly, is that right? But Tom would have a copy of it.
We can give the town a copy.
Yeah, I think, I think that's one of the conditions, I think that's one of the conditions, that's at least been discussed, okay. Mr. Henry, I know that you are interested in this. Do you wanna take a look at this and and have questions ready for the next meeting or are you prepared to ask some questions now?
No, I think we should just move on for now and we can talk about the next meeting.
Okay. That's a deal, all right. I had a couple of things from the last meeting before we go into waivers to follow up, so. The first was. Was staffing, I went, I went back to the management plan narrative that. Went to your management plan and the management plan says, see management plan narrative. And I think that's still the effective management plan is the one that's in the, it says to see the management plan narrative. And I was looking at staffing and I, and I remember the conversation that, the discussion that we had at the last meeting about. How you staff thirty hours a week approximately, Wednesdays off, you try to have some time during. During the weekend for people to make phone calls into the staff. And my concern at, at the last meeting was, we've got a lot of, a lot of these. Units will be occupied by people working nine to five jobs. Some of them will be working other hours, but a lot of them will be nine to five jobs and it may be very difficult for them to. To have access to people, the resident assistants, to have access. Outside of, you know, normal business hours and your person that worked on that said, well, we'll, we can be flexible. We like to have about thirty hours of of time there and that's not reflected in the management plan narrative in any way. That you intend to have a pro, and I'm not, I don't think it's our job to hold you to how many hours a week, you gotta have people on. You know, and on on site, what their hours have to be, what their level is. But I think it would be really valuable if you would make an attempt to. To show aspira, at least aspirationally, what your intention is to try to. Accommodate those people that work nine to five jobs and can't deal with the resident assistance. Person during the day because they, there are jobs, and so some way I'd like to see the. The management plan for staffing be changed to reflect what your intent is and how you might deal with that. Because I think you're, I think the description, the representation that we had at the meeting last time was good. And we'll, so I'm operating on that representation, but I'd like to see that representation reflected in the management plan narrative.
Yes, and 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 and, you know, and I'm happy to send a revised. Management plan narrative that includes something more along the lines of what are, you know, our. The, our staff had had mentioned at the, at the, at the last meeting because that's what the intent is, so.
Yeah, that's the intent, so that'd be good to have that management plan narrative, I'd like to have that follow through, that's one thing, thank you, we look forward to that. On the parking plan, again, you just said we're gonna manage it. Are you, do you intend to have stickers, do you have hangers, are you gonna have, how, it's for, especially for the Belcher Town roadside. Which you have, you know, forty seven places and there's a possibility that people. Might decide that, oh, that's a big parking lot and there's a bus stop right over there and I don't have to go all the way downtown, I'm gonna. Throw my car in there even though he's not a resident and then jump on the bus to to school or to work or whatever. And get free park, quote unquote, free parking, so what if you, how are you gonna approach that, are you, are you just gonna manage it? By visual, are you gonna manage it by hangers, are you gonna manage it by a sticker on the car, how are you gonna do that?
Um, yeah, it's my understanding that it would be some, you know, permitted parking with, you know, with a sticker or or some, some way to identify the vehicles. For the onsite staff to be able to. I guess, monitor that area and 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 just, you did say forty sevens, there, there's forty seven units and there's fifty two spaces there.
Fifty two spaces, right, that's right, thank you. Those numbers have changed, I can't keep them straight. So, that's great, and I think that should be put in the parking plan narrative then, something that to the effect that. We will have a system that identifies individual cars that are approved. And you don't have to tell me if you're gonna have a hanger or you're gonna have a sticker, that's up to you guys, but some, you, you're gonna have a system to identify. Which cars belong there, so put that in the parking plan narrative.
Okay, yes, they have to be registered with with our property management, so.
Something about that, yep. Another thing that came up in some discussions is. People are gonna take their, especially in Belcher Town, people will take their trash down to the big trash area. And put it in the, where there's the enclosure and there's the big dumpsters. And they're gonna have to walk through the whole building to get out downtown, get out, get out of the building, walk to the dumpster. If we, if you can put a picture of the, if you have a picture of the, of the first floor of the Belcher Town.
Yep, ho- hold on, yep, hold on one moment.
My concern is that that's a really long way to carry your garbage, if you're just doing a couple of bags, it's leaky, you know. Garbage is not always the easiest thing and and it may be a long ways, I'm wondering if. You have an idea of putting a, some type of carrier or a bear, kind of like a wheel, not a wheelbarrow, but some kind of a. Way for people to, to move their, their garbage. And trash more easily than trying to carry it through that whole building and outside and drop it in the. The trash area, I'm trying, trying to think about how, what's the most efficient way to do that and where, where would you store such a thing?
Right, so, and and, yeah, this came up, I think, in discussions at 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 some point and. We looked into this and, you know, we discussed it with our our property management team and their. You know, their, their response is, is that, if this, this type of. You know, the trash and 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 how you, you know, and how you, you, you take care of it is, is just that the residents just need to be educated on how to do that. We do make special accommodations for some residents if they, if they need that. But at our other properties such as the building that I'm in right now. Is is a similar property and it's, you know, it's about three hundred seventy seven feet from. Can you see my screen?
Yep.
So, so here's, here's the, this is a, this is a four story building on on Pleasant Street in North Hampton. And this is, this is pretty much the corridor path here, along the way down the elevator, out to the dumpster. And it's about three hundred and seventy seven feet, so it's, it's similar, we don't have any issues here. There's onsite property management to clean up anything that, that, you know. That rips or that tears or if there's an issue and, you know, another one of our sites. At at Olympia Oaks in Amherst, granted, this is, you know, five hundred and fifty or so feet. To the dumpster from the the furthest unit and, you know, we are proposing the furthest, the furthest distance here would be. You know, roughly three hundred and eighty, three hundred and ninety feet, similar to the building that I'm in. So we don't see this as an issue necessarily, but if there, it becomes an issue, it's something that our management staff. Will, will address, you know, based on the situation that they're, that they're, you know, faced with, I guess.
Okay, so you've seen, you have a experience with these long runs in other properties and you've figured out a way to deal with it if you need to. That, that's.
Yes, yes, and this is what, yes, this is typical.
And the way you deal with it is, if you, anyway, you haven't had to deal with it, is what you're telling me?
Right.
Put in some kind of a carrier so people can move their trash more easily, all right. All right, they had the same kind of question about laundry. You know, they're gonna be taking laundry down in some kind of little laundry cart or some sort. Could be stored in the laundry room that people could gather it, have you thought, do you do that, is that something that's done? All right, well, number one, I guess, have you given any more thoughts of whether more laundry facilities or not, from the last meeting? It seems to me that you were comfortable with the laundry facilities all being on the first floor, all being in one space. And that's what you, your preference would be.
That, yes.
That's correct, right?
That, that is correct.
And so then we just have the question of. Are there a lot, you know, going back and forth at three hundred and six, not three hundred and sixty feet, but two hundred and some feet from the farthest. Apartment to the laundry facility. Do you think about, how do you deal with that at your other properties? Do people just buy their own bags and carry it? Is that what they do? Or do you have like a laundry cart or anything like that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe we have a laundry cart. I, you know, I think people are, will take their own laundry to the, you know, to the laundry similar to someone at, you know, at another rental. Building that would have to take their laundry to a laundromat or somewhere else, whereas this is onsite.
Okay. And the lastly, on this, again, towards the management plan and our, I think, our good meeting last week, the last time, you had. Representations about how quickly you would get the snow off and and how, you know, what it would take to move, to move, remove snow, how many inches that would be. And there's not very much in the in the. Management narrative about snow removal, except that you you put it to certain places and then you take it off if there's a lot. And your guy talked about four and a half inches, six inches. And I think it'd be helpful to have more a more fulsome discuss discussion about when you are going to take the the snow off the property. Than you than you have in the narrative plan and the management plan narrative, excuse me. It would, it just, it would represent again what your guy talked about at the last meeting, which made sense to me. And again, it's not a hard and fast number. I don't think if it's ten point one inches, you're in violation of your comprehensive permit. But it gives a shows that this is what your 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 intention is about removing snow when it gets to be so high. And it shows that you've thought through, yeah, when it's, we have that much snow, we don't have very much room, especially at the southeast side. So I'd like to, if you'd review that, and I think it'd be helpful to, you know, give a more fulsome description of the snow removal process in your management narrative.
Yeah, I mean, that's something, that's something I can take a look at. I am, I am a little concerned though, because it, I believe that the the management plan says that when it, you know, when it becomes, as you had mentioned. When there becomes a stockpile of it being too much, it would be trucked off site. To describe how that happens is difficult because it's going to be, it it's it's very dependent on the weather. You might get a, you know, a ten inch storm, you plow up the snowbanks and it's, you know, it's very light snow, so it's a small storm, right? And or it 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 it's a small pile or you have, you know, a warm spell for a number of days and it all melts and that sort of thing. The the intent of Wayfinders is to, if if it, you know, if it's, if it's an issue to to remove it from site and I. I I'm happy to, I'm happy to revise that. I just, I just wanna make be be clear that I I wanna make sure, you know, what sort of detail you're looking for that to be revised to.
I I would, I I guess I looked at it and I thought it was less than fulsome, so when I'm looking at, I'm trying to find it here. It says, we will contract with a third party. We want to clear the walks, compliance with local dick. Rules dictate we have, we clear the snow from sidewalks. Porous, we have porous for two minutes pavement. We anticipate that on nights onsite, snow storage will suffice with snow storage areas depicted on the site. Exhibit six, however, if necessary, excess snow will be transported off site. That's all it said. We got, we got one sentence on on that. I just thought it made sense to do more what you what you've just talked about. So that, you know, so that's there. Um, alright, that'd be great. And lastly, we already talked about the signs. That's everything that I had from last meeting. Other people have other questions and follow up from the last, from our last meeting. Alright. If not. I think we could go to discussion of the waivers. And so the way, as I said, the way I thought it made the most sense to discuss the waivers requests from the applicant. Is to run through them, identify those that we think are not a problem. And then identify those that we may have a a problem with or we need more clarification or there has to be some work done on. And do that in the public hearing section where we can have a conversation about it. Alright, so let's start, can we start with the waivers on. Southeast Street. And Ms. Williams and Mr. Malloy, I know that you've also, and Ms. Murray, you've also all worked on these, so feel free to. To it, to it add to our discussion if you think we're missing something here or there's a potential waiver problem that we did not identify. So the, the first waiver request is prohibited use, you you want to waive. The requirement that. Currently under the bylaw that does not allow for the development of multifamily units of containing thirty one units on a single lot. Obviously, I mean, that's a waiver you need to get for this. Second waiver really just kind of describes the the type of units that are in the. In the in the building and normally you have a limit on the. Well, what they have is a limit of the number of total number of units you can have under section three point three two three. And that has to be waived. And no more than fifty percent of the units can be of a certain dwelling size. And again, you're gonna have more than that. So you have to waive that in order to allow your project to to continue, I mean, to be built, I think. And. On this one, at the end of that waiver request, let's see. It mentions a management plan as defined in form and context. I just want to make sure that it, one of the, your waiver request is to waive the requirements of three point three two three. And one of the things in three point three two three is that you have a management plan as defined in terms and form and context. And the rules and regulations adopted by the permit granting authority, that's us, and that should be included as an integral part. Other areas of the of the. The application have a reference to a management plan and I want to make sure and perhaps. Attorney Murray can help me here. I want to make sure that by waiving this section, we're not waiving the requirement for a management plan. You see it on the next page. If you can go to one more page down, Ms. Williams. Here, it says. And that, that portion of the is, it requires a a management plan. And I want to make sure that we're not inadvertently waiving the requirement for a management plan.
If I may, just add a comment. Thank you. So, yeah, so we would, we wanted to be specific in in as far as what we were. Zeroing in on which was to, with, as you mentioned, regarding the number of units and also the permits that we would otherwise be required, so waiving it. So we were specific in the section, portion of that section that we were asking to. We have waivers from, so.
So you're, you really just want to be, you want to waive. We don't have.
To allow the number of units that were. So to proceed without the the requirement to have the site separate design review on special permit.
Right, separate designer, right, okay. Ms. Murray, can you. Work that out in the in the waiver?
I certainly can, Mr. Chairman. And one thing I would just to to follow up on Attorney Fryman's comment about the design review standards or waiver from the design review process. Where those fall under separate sections of the zoning bylaw. Where you see sections three point two zero four zero and three point two zero four one. I think we should all, they should be a separate waiver request from those sections explicitly.
Okay. Alright. So who's, who's gonna draft that? Just want to make sure that gets done.
I think between myself and Attorney Fryman, we can probably work out this language for the boards for the review.
Alright, great. The next is wait, and please, board members, if you have a question or a comment on any of this, please just interrupt. Because I'm looking at paper and not at the small little pictures, representations of you on the on the screen. Is a side yard setback for a shed. We've seen that on the drawings. It just means that it's going to be closer and it's going to be higher than would normally be allowed in the town. I think they need that for. Materials and 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 equipment storage. I don't have any problems with that waiver.
Ms. Ms. Chair, I just asked a question on that one because. They're they're asking to include, you know, a shed of ten feet. Or they're saying that it'll be between ten and twelve feet high and it'll be ten feet from the property line.
Right.
If it's ten feet high and ten feet from the property line, then it complies. So I I don't know whether they want to think about, are they committing to a particular size of shed? Or at this point, do they want to commit to it's going to be a twelve foot high shed located ten feet off the property line?
You don't have a design for that, finalized design for that shed yet? Is that right?
Those, yeah, those are, those are like a prefabricated shed typically that we would, we would purchase and they range in height. That's why the range was was placed in there to to allow for a little variation depending on, you know, where that, where that item was to be sourced from. So it's, we can, we can adjust as needed, but.
Instead of saying single story, we can put the specific height there. Well, not specific, but the range.
Isn't that what you proposed, ten to twelve feet?
Right, but I'm just saying in the waiver, we just referred to it as a single story if that was the issue.
Well, no, I think the issue is that it might be twelve feet, so.
Right, so I'm saying we would say ten to twelve feet as opposed to one story, if that makes it clear.
That's what I see in the proposed language before me. That gives them some flexibility, doesn't it, Attorney Murray?
It it certainly does. Like I said, i- if the board's inclined to grant the waiver and it ultimately turns out that they. Put a ten foot high shed, ten feet off the property line and the waiver was not needed, it's really no harm, no foul.
Right, perfect. Don't have a problem with three, with number four. Fence height, I think that's been indicated on the site plans. I I am not troubled by the fence height waiver. I don't think the town, the staff is, and I haven't heard any concern from board members. Number waiver five is fences again. They would need a building permit to install a a temporary. Fence and I guess something that we're, I think, we don't need to have that done. It can be done as part of the comprehensive permit unless staff has a problem with that. I've not heard it. Number six is additional lot. I mean, this, number seven is basic minimum front, okay, we'll stay with six. Six is the additional lot area. It's more dense than it would otherwise be allowed and we have to waive that requirement. Requirement of the zoning bylaw in order to allow the building to be built as per the site design. Number seven is the dimensional regulations, minimum front yard setback. They actually are going closer to the street and the narrative says they're doing that because the town wants to create sort of a village feel. As opposed to having it set back farther. It also gives them more parking in the back. I think, Mr. Malloy, you've had some discussion with them about this. Is that correct? Is Nate on? Ms. Williams, do you know if that's the rationale behind this?
I don't. We would have to have Mr. Malloy confirm that.
I am on, is the question about the front setback?
Yeah, yeah, the reason you're, they're closer than fifteen feet is because trying to create more of a village feel, is that right?
Right, and we, in the program we had for the site, try to fit a lot on there and so. Yeah, it it, that's what it needs to be. And then there's the common, you know, there's a a wide right of way in front of that property, yep.
Alright, the same thing in the rear, you got the minimum side setback, you just need to be closer to. To the. Property line in order to allow the building to be built, right?
Right.
Okay. That's number eight, so. Seven and eight, number nine is again another dimensional regulation. This is again on, mean roof height is thirty five feet. And they want to go up to mean height of thirty six, but the penthouse is thirty nine feet. It's part of the design. I think it has to be, it has to be accommodated, otherwise the the building doesn't work. Parking, we've had a lot of discussion about parking. But there's no way there's enough. Land to provide for two parking spaces and they're gonna work on towns parking. And one of the conditions is that the developer work with the town to try to find some way to increase the amount of residential parking on public streets in that area. But. This does allow fourteen onsite parking spaces for thirty one units, which is substantially less than what can be normally allowed, normally required, I mean. Waiver eleven is again parking, that's it's a setback issue. Again, it's on a small lot. So we're allowing to be developed within five feet of the building, which normally I think it's, it's eight feet. It's the restriction. Again, it's just, it's a case of the, we've got really tight space. And number twelve is design standards and landscape standards. Compliance with the street and site work construction standard adopted by the town council. Wave compliance with the street and site works. So how different, I guess, the question I have is how different is the project plans from what's required by the. Site work construction standards adopted by the town council? What are we waiving here?
There are no, there are no standards as far as we understand.
Staff who confirm that or respond to that?
Yeah, we have not located those standards. So there had been some, there had been some older ones, you know, decades old, but nothing that was more recent. So, you know, they had a curb radii, which I think is maybe another waiver, but other than that, there really isn't any. Anything that we could tell, but without knowing what those standards are, then we have this.
You're not concerned about that waiver?
No.
Alright, the curb, then it goes to the curb radius question. You just mentioned that, that's the next waiver. One way use would be eighteen feet wide. This is twelve foot curb radius at the driveway apron and allow a twelve foot curb radius. And the curb radius shall be a minimum of fifteen feet normally. And that's just because again, the, so. The property is is, there's not a lot of property there and this is, the traffic engineer doesn't think this is dangerous. Do you support this? You guys support the waiver?
Yeah, the the town engineer had no problem with this.
Okay.
Especially because the the street in front of this is one way, so it's one way south, so you turn right in, turn right out. And so that it it works with the, you know, the limited curb radius.
And the waiver, then the next, Mr. Slobodar?
I I have a question about thirteen. So it calls for an eighteen feet wide for two way use. But if you turn right to go in and you turn right when you come out, that's, that's a two way use, right? You can, you can both enter and leave the property. In fact, you have to enter or leave the property there. So. So how is a 12-foot curb adequate for two cars?
Is, is there a site plan that could be shown?
Yes, and I'd just like to hop in here too and say, we're not requesting a, a waiver from the 18-foot-wide travel access aisle. We're, we're talking about the curb radius, that's the, the kinda, the corner by the, by where it, you know, meets the, meets the street. There's, there's, I believe that that's in excess of 18 feet at the, at the entrance, but let me pull up the site plan and we can.
But if, if you're asking if 12 feet is an exception, what is it, what is it an exception to, an alternative to? It's not an alternative to an 18-foot-wide traffic way, is it?
No.
It's 15 feet, I think, Mr. Slobodar.
It's a waiver to, it's a waiver to the arc of the curb on the driveway apron. So usually if you have a bigger radius, you have a more, you know, a longer curved section where the road and the driveway curve to meet each other. And a shorter radius means it's a tighter turn, so it's not as gradual of an apron opening. It's a, it's a shorter, you know, curve, and that's where I think a, a site plan would be helpful, just so it illustrates what that waiver is showing.
I am sharing that right now. Are you able to see my screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so let's see. Great. So can you see my cursor here? This is, this is a larger curb radius here. This is the 12-foot radius. So it's, it's, this, this is from 12-foot circle right here, and that's what the, that's what that, that's what that waiver request is.
Oh, okay. The, the 18 feet for the travel lane between the two, that, that, that's still 18 feet, right?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. All right, good. Thank you. That answers it. Thank you.
Thank you. That clears that up. Thank you.
Yep.
The last waiver, the next waiver is waiver 14, dealing with parking screening. The requirements under the bylaw provide effective screening in parking areas to adjacent streets and properties. And if you hope, pull the site plan up again, I think that would help us with your request. So your, the screening is you, you can't screen in the back parking lot, because that's not, I mean, that's all gonna be fields, and if you screen there, then you've, you've imposed upon the parking area back there. Is that correct? That's one of the areas that you.
Yes, yes.
You don't have additional screening because it goes into a, 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 a field of our meadow and not into property, is that correct?
Yes, and there's vegetation on the, on the opposite side of, you know, where this existing fence is here.
And where there's houses.
Yeah, the houses are, yeah, back up over here, and there's a field over this, this area here.
And you don't have screening in the front where there, you just, light trespass from the cars would just go onto your own and against the building.
Here.
Yes. No, not there. I mean, right in front, right in back of the, the transformer, the energy square.
Right here.
Yep.
This is a landscape area here, but yes, there's, there's, there's a walkway here, and then, and this is the community room here.
There's no reason for screening. So that's, is that the reason you're looking for the waiver?
Yes, because in this, in this area here, it's, it's just, we have a, you know, we, we, we provide a six-foot-high fence and some plantings along this, you know, this area here. Around in this area, there's not additional plantings, however, there's existing vegetation on opposite, you know, on the opposite properties within the, you know, wetland area.
Got it. Any questions regarding that from the board? Waiver 15 is allows you to, to have bicycle racks indoors.
Or, yes, to, to allow the, the bicycle racks that are shown on the plans, the outdoor racks are here, and in, inside in the lower level here, that's, there's a bike room with storage for for, for 31 bikes.
All right. And the waiver 16 is sign regulations. We've kinda talked about that. You wanna waive signage on the project plans that do not comply with the bylaw for development form, substance, and dimensions shown in the project plans. Does that sign that you showed us not meet the bylaw requirements on a permanent sign? Is it too large?
I don't believe it's too large. It may be in, in, it may be more than 30 inch, or less than 30 inches from the sidewalk. So it's, it's shown, it's shown closer to the front here. If I am. So it's to, it's to allow for the sign as shown on the plans here.
Well, the waiver's request is to waive all form, substance, dimensions shown on the project plan. I don't, you know, I don't wanna waive all that. I, you just wanna waive the, the placement, right? You're not asking for a sign that is, that via, the sign in and of itself violates the the zoning bylaw. You're asking to be able to place the sign in a place where the zoning bylaw would not otherwise allow you to place the sign.
You can make that more specific and identify that.
Yep. And then, okay, any other, any questions regarding that? I'll move to 17 if not. This would allow, 17 would allow you to install a temporary project sign of a, of a given size. And I, I have no problem advertising that this thing is going up and who's building it, and, and who's funding it. I think that's a good thing. And 18 is also signage. So why do you not want building commissioner approval of additional signage? You've got one temporary project sign in 18, and one temporary project sign on 17. 17 is where it wants to be placed. It seems to me that if you wanna have a.
It would, fine for additional signs, but we didn't wanna go through the process with regard to the signage that we're proposing now.
You don't wanna, say that again?
We didn't wanna have the separate approval process for the signage that we're proposing now. If we, as you mentioned earlier, if we have additional signage or changes, we will be happy to go through the building commissioner to do that.
Okay, but the waiver request is, you can do it without separate building commissioner approval. Right? Am I reading this wrong? To install one temporary sign of a certain size constructed of plywood without separate building commissioner approval.
Right, that's what we're asking for.
And you don't wanna have the building commissioner approve your temporary sign?
We want it as part of this process, that it's part of the comp permit, and not have to go through a separate approval process.
It's, it's, but it's, if this is minimal, it.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, I think one of the other reasons for this waiver is that the building commissioner can grant a temporary sign, provided a maximum of a three-week duration. They actually want this temporary sign to be up for the duration of the construction.
But we don't have, so you want us to approve a sign that we haven't seen, and we don't want us, and for a longer period than the town would allow, and not to have the building commissioner look at it? Right? Yeah, that's, that's kinda what it is.
We can create the, the criteria on which we would have that sign. It's a typical sign that has all the lenders on it, and, you know, the finding.
All that kinda good stuff. I mean, I, I think that should be there. I mean, believe me, but, you know, I just, I wanna see what you.
This is, this is a typical construction sign, and this is what I think is what you would expect and what you had described, and does that seem?
That's fine. And Mr. Malloy or Ms. Williams, what does the building commissioner think about this? Do they need to approve it?
Yeah, so typically, we would even on our, the town projects on, funded with block grant or mass works, we would have to have a project sign that size that could stay up for, you know, four months, and so we know, you know, temporary might be the length of the project, but it's not a permanent sign that remains after, you know, the product's complete, so.
But you don't, we don't need to have approval, so you're not worried about it not being approved by the building commissioner?
No.
Okay, all right. 19 is site plan review. We talked, there's no reason that you need site plan review, which should be done as part of the comprehensive permit.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if I, if I may on this one. In this particular zoning district, apartments, the use would be subject to site plan review. So I, I think it would be prudent to just waive the site plan review, and just say that the, this whole comprehensive permit process, quite frankly, is a more intense site plan review process.
So we'll grant the waiver, grant waiver 19?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, I agree. Create driveway access without any applicable fees. And the ZB Act in place of permitting authorities in the comprehensive permit serves as master permit. So is this, is this a curb cut issue? Is that what this number 20 is? And would there normally be fees paid to the town for a curb cut? Is that what this is all about? And is the curb cut regulated as to where it can be cut and all that? And are we waiving all that? And because it's, because it's in the site plan, the approved site plan, is that the thinking here? Yes, yes, right? Unless the town has a problem with this, it seems to facilitate the completion of the project. Do we lose fees? How much are we losing in fees? Would Nate or Ms. Williams or Mr. Maloney?
I don't know, you know, right now what that would be. You know, when, when staff reviewed this, we don't, we don't have a, we don't have a problem with this waiver. You know, there are some other ones where we didn't wanna waive the fee, but this one it was acceptable too.
Okay. And then we have wetlands waivers on the, free wetland waiver requirements, and my question is, I just wanna make sure that COMCOM is okay with all of this. And if they are, then these waivers don't bother me, but there are waivers that the wetlands and the COMCOM have to decide on. And have to bless. So are you, does COMCOM agree with this? Do we know?
Yeah, the Conservation Commission approved the Southeast Street site already, and I think they're ready to move on the Beltray Town Road without a quorum issue at the recent meeting. So they're, the Conservation Commission is comfortable approving both site plans.
All right, so then waivers 21, 22, and 23 are without objection from COMCOM.
Right.
Okay. 24, waive compliance and separate approvals, permits, and fees with the town's stormwater management bylaw. That is not something I'm familiar with. It's a storm water management bylaw. So is this, is number 24 of concern to the town?
Uh, no, not at this time. They, they have to have, you know, they're reading DEP best management practices. They have, you know, they'll have, have to comply with what they've provided to the Conservation Commission and the notice of intent. And so, you know, they have, as part of the review was, you know, like the, the TSS removal, storage and release of stormwater, so the town's satisfied with all of that.
Okay, any concerns from the members? All right, if not, number 12, I mean, number 25 deals with demolition of, of potentially historic significant buildings. I, I don't know what that is on this site, that is being demolished, but.
So, Mr. So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I had a similar question, because I didn't realize we were demolishing a building, but Attorney Frimman then brought to my attention how demolition is actually defined. And the definition includes the act of pulling down, destroying, removing, or raising 25% or more of the front, back, or side elevations of a building. And I, it appears that at least with respect to the existing school building, one facade is going to have to be taken down for connection purposes. So it's not your typical demolition delay of a historic building.
It has to be done for the project to go forward. It is currently drafted, yep.
Correct.
This one deals with sewer use regulation approval. This one I am a little more concerned with. What you're really saying is you, you just wanna have input into the permit process as opposed to getting the Department of Public Works to approve your sewer connection. And I don't know why we wouldn't require, I don't know why we waived the requirement that the Public Works Department approved the sewer and water connection.
Our, our question is just related to the fact that the comp permit by definition incorporates all local permits. So we're just asking that this also be part of, incorporated as part of the, you know, that that permit, local permit be granted as part of the comp permit, so that we're not going and seeking separate permits.
But how do I make sure that you're complying with the requirements of the town if we waive the requirement for the town to approve the sewer connection?
Well, originally, I believe plans were furnished to the different departments to review. I believe there's been input or at least opportunity for them to have input into their plans.
This is the same, this is kinda the same question I have on 27. Does it, is it a long delay? Is it expensive to get the approval?
Again, just by the nature of this permit, by calling it a comprehensive permit, eliminates the need to have to go get separate permits. We can just hit the ground running with a building permit once we're finished with the comp permit process other than state permits.
Sure, that's, you know, but.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah. They're up for me. Now we're gonna make sure that, that the town is comfortable with the connections to the town sewer and town water system.
So if, if I may, with respect to those two waivers, I mean, obviously the board, it, it's within your discretion as to whether or not you wanna grant these waivers. So if you were inclined to reject those waivers, they would have to go through the, the normal process for permitting and payment of fees, et cetera. Another thought is, if you're inclined to grant these specific waivers, and yes, the comprehensive permit acts as the master permit, including for sewer and water connections, we could still require, however, as a condition of the comprehensive permit, that they still need to submit an application to the Department of Public Works, and that the Department of Public Works still has to, either that they have to meet DPW standards, or, you know, something to the effect that DPW shall review and approve, which approval shall not be unreasonably withheld. You know, so that there's an understanding that, yes, DPW has the technical expertise to make sure you've got the right-sized pipe, for example. But DPW cannot deny the water or sewer connection permit itself. Um, but DPW cannot deny the water or sewer connection permit itself. So either way, we can handle it depending upon the, the will of the board.
Do that as a, as a condition?
Yes.
It makes sense to, I, I, I just think we have to have DPW review over this. It's. I mean, it's a, it's a town service. It's town water and town sewer. And I don't, I don't think you are trying to, to, to get away with something here. It's just that normally every, you know, every town should require that. Alright, so.
Kind of streamline the processes, what is the goal is.
Yep, the goal, I, I like streamlining. That's why we have a comprehensive permit. That's the whole idea here. But, um, we don't want to waive something that I think is in public interest.
Can we ask this question? And what about, um, a review now before the comp permits issued to have them sign off on it?
If you can get that done before, that would be great. Then we'll include it as, and then it becomes part of the record.
Okay, I don't know what they've already seen. Maybe they've already, um, have reviewed. I'm not sure. But we, we can explore that. Okay.
For that, if not, um, then we'll have, we'll look for a condition to require the approval. Without, um, unreasonable delay. And then the last two are, um, planning development guidelines. Uh, for separate tree warmer approval to waive compliance with the Amherst landscape guidelines. Um, removal and planning shown on project plans. Uh, you know, you, as far as I'm concerned, you've shown which trees are going to be removed on the site plans. There weren't any concern about that. I don't know why I would have further review of the, of the trees on the site. Alright, and the last one is development plans. To allow waivers to requirements and local bylaws and regulations relating to dimensional use requirements to the extent necessary to build a project. Project as presented on this project plans and any subsequent amendments that may be subject to permitting authority and are so approved. That, that is, I read that and it looks like that's just a, a, a big blanket waiver of almost anything. Is, what's the, what's the purpose of this waiver request?
We have seen it in other decisions that have been issued by this DBA. Um, and I think, you know, it, it's a catch-all. Yeah, it's, um. You've reviewed the plans and you're basically saying, yes, we've approved the plans. If we've missed something or have something incorrect, we're granting it because we've approved the, you know, by virtue of approving the plans. Incorporates the waiver.
But does this bypass any review by the building commissioner if we say yes to this provision?
We're not going to, we're not changing anything. We're not changing any of the, any, anything that has been submitted and approved by this board. We're not changing anything. That would have another process. We're just saying you've signed off on everything that we've submitted and we've, um. Identified all the waivers that we believe are appropriate. If something is. Was, is just inaccurate, but not, not changing the plans is again, just a catch-all.
And, and what if you have to do something with the plans? What if you have to change your plans during?
We come back. We have, there's a process for that.
Okay.
Can't change anything without coming back to you and asking it, it could be a minor, and you have to determine if it's a minor change or a major change. So I, we have seen this, we picked, we didn't create this. This was in another, at least one other, um, decision that was issued by the ZBI.
Mr. Malloy, you have your hands up.
Yes, staff would not recommend waiving or granting this waiver. So that's, we've communicated that, uh, it is a blanket waiver and. You know, in the decision, we enumerate a number of the things that are considered insubstantial and don't need, um. To be reviewed by the zoning board. And then, like Attorney Freiman said, there are things that need to be reviewed, but we would not, you know, have this waiver. Um, you know, we, we try to identify everything that is needed. And so to have this blanket waiver, meaning any other local bylaw. If we miss it here is just waived without, uh, review. That's something that the building commissioner and staff wouldn't recommend.
Yeah, so. Well, you've kind of confirmed my, my initial concern about this as an overly broad waiver. So we've gone through the waiver. Are there any additional waiver requests? This is it, the time being, right? For thirty-one? Alright, so let's just.
That's correct.
So the ones that we, most all of these, you know, can be approved. Let's just run through the ones that either we're going, having, uh, more work coming back to us or we're, we aren't. Um, then we have some, ones that we have concern about, like the last one. Attorney Murray, do you, have you kept a list of these? Which ones?
I, I have. Do you, do you want me to go through them, Mr. Chair?
Just give us the numbers, the ones that.
Um, I have, I have number two needing some language.
About the management plan?
Yep.
Yep. Yep.
Uh, number three as to the, the actual height of the shed.
Alright. Okay.
Want to hear my pages? Bear with me.
Yeah.
What, what if we set a shed now to exceed twelve feet in height? Would that be sufficient?
It should solve it up, wouldn't it? Yeah. Yep, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Most of the other ones were explained.
Sixteen, I think, with respect to the sign, um, we just needed a little more detail as to where that. You know, where the sign would be placed.
Yeah. That's sixteen, yeah. And then, uh. COMCOM, then the rest of them, I think, are okay, aren't they?
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back to you with regard to, um, twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Twenty-six and twenty-seven. Alright.
And that is it.
And then the last one, twenty-nine, we're concerned about that. That waiver is the catch-all waiver. Alright, so, um, I think we've gone through these waivers, um. We've got some work on it. It'll come back next week, but I think when we go through the waivers, the next time, we pretty much. Eliminated a lot of the discussion that we need to have and just will focus on coming back for the ones that we had identified as having concerns about. At our next meeting. Any comments from board members before we go to break and then come back and do the waivers for, um, Belcher Town Road?
I, if, if I may ask, um, the applicant one question on number twenty-nine. What is the impediment or downside if we deny this request, number twenty-nine?
Um, I think, uh, we just have to come back if there was something that. We saw that was inaccurate, um, it wasn't reflected correctly in the decision that was part of what was already, what was approved. Again, it's not changed, we're not changing anything as far as what's been submitted or what, um. Been approved. It's just how, it, how it's characterized in, in the, um, decision itself. I, I don't know that this. That it will be a problem, but it's, it's just kind of a protection provision, saving time and avoiding us having to come back.
But there's also.
I'm going to look at the, I'm going to find where we've, you know, what other decisions where this was granted. And see if it was a, you know, we can talk about it.
I, I think it was, uh, sorry, I think it was the Valley CDC decision for Ball Lane that had a similar waiver.
But there also is provision saying that, um, you can, the building commissioner can. Allow for movement of buildings and based upon, um, ledge or. If, if, if it's two feet this way or two feet that way, there's some flexibility already that the building commissioner can approve. Um, construction, even though it is not, um, exactly what's in the site, the approved site plan.
Yeah, no, this is more if there was, um, a portion of a, a waiver, a portion of a provision that should have been waived and it wasn't included in. Something, you know, that, that situation.
Okay, does that answer your question, Mr. Henry?
It does. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright, well, let's take, it's seven forty-one. Let's take a five-minute break. Mr. Meadows, you get a chance to call your engineer. Um, I'm going to get a drink of water. And we'll all be back and go through the waivers for the Belcher Town Road site at, in, at seven forty-six. Alright. Uh, it's seven forty-seven. Good timing. So I think the next thing we should do is go through the requested waivers for the seventy Belcher Town Road. A lot of these are. Similar, uh, there are some differences, but a lot of these are similar. Um, so, Mr. Gruber?
Um, yes, I would ask just if, um, before we start, um, was, um, Mr. Meadow is able to. Um, discuss with his engineer, just our engineer, um, is here and, um, if, if.
He was on the phone, so I'm, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm on the phone with him now.
Oh.
So, Mr. Meadows, when you do, uh, get an answer, we, we can break into the waiver requests so that they're, um, engineered. And you can speak about, um, that issue, okay? Alright, um, so let's start with waiver number one, prohibited uses. This, this allows for multifamily development that would not otherwise be allowed, uh, on this single lot. So. I mean, that has to be done in order to build this project. Number two is, um, construction within a hundred feet of a FEMA flood zone in a flood-prone conservancy area. Again, this is, I think this is a COMCOM issue. Um, and Mr. Malloy or Ms. Williams, where's, what's the status of COMCOM approval? They're. They're inclined to approve, but they just didn't have enough, uh, didn't have a quorum at the last meeting. Is that what you, is that the case?
That's essentially it, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. So if there is a problem, we'll know about it before we have final approval.
That is correct, yes.
So two doesn't seem to be a problem. Um, three, I think is the same thing we had with. Uh, number two and the last one, whereas I want to make sure that we, we're not waiving the, the management plan. It's the same issue. I don't think we have to go any more detail of that. Four is filling of land, which is all, I, I don't think that's done on, on the, at all on the other site. So. I'm assuming that you've worked with the town and they're comfortable with the, the site plan, the grading and all that kind of stuff. That the. The. Normal, that the requirement and the limitation on, on fill, uh, which we, we have in, in the bylaw. Has been, will be exceeded by this and the town and has looked at that and is not, is not concerned about it. Is that correct? Mr. Malloy or?
Yeah, correct. So as part of the project, you know, they are bringing up Phil, so that, that, that's all fine.
Yep, gotta do it. Okay. Yep, gotta do it, okay? Uh, we've got this uh five and, oh, Mr. Meadows, I see you're back.
I'm back.
Yep.
Um. If we could have the piping plan put back up again, please.
Yeah, I'll just share my screen here. Okay. When you see my screen?
Yeah, I don't know that this is in the upper left-hand corner. There were some. Indicators there, what? After the temperature? Mr. Gray, do you know?
Yeah, that basically tells us that it it can operate at low temperatures. That's the uh the catalog data shows that it can go down. Um, negative four to negative thirteen degrees, uh that's what that indicates, dude.
So that's the low-temperature limit?
Yes.
Okay, so if we get down below negative thirteen, does the system uh have a diminishing amount of output or does it stop?
The system actually will continue operating down to negative eighteen. Uh, it will be at at a diminished output below zero degrees.
Do you have a graph as to what that output might be below zero?
I can get that for you, that's in the engineering manual, I don't have that available right now, but I can get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Meadows, on this issue?
I think that's it, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we've um, no problem with number four, number five, this is the same issue on um a shed. Language that says up to twelve feet, I think solved my problem, I don't know we need to do anything more than that. Number six is temporary construction fencing. Um. It's shown on the way, permit requirements for all fences shown on the project plan and include this part of the comprehensive permit, I think. I don't think that's an issue. Dimensional regulations um for, I mean, it's 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 more dense and is allowed by the zoning bylaw, but that's the nature of the property. And the nature of the project. Number eight is um minimum setback, this I misspoke earlier. Um, this is the place where you're trying to bring them a little bit closer to the the street so that it feels less like a. It feels more like a village, I think, that's what you wanted to accomplish your need, I think, right? One of the things is trying to bring it a little bit closer, um so it feels like it's um all part of a a village down there in that part of Amherst. Part of the reason for this, correct?
Correct, yeah, so the original site design was uh maybe the building was set back a bit more and the town wanted to have a, yeah, a village skate there, a streetscape.
Um, lot coverage. It's what you need for the, you need for parking and for the building. Um, exceeds that, exceeds it on dimensional regulations for height. This one is more significant, it's as opposed to thirty-five, a roof height of forty-one. Um. But that's what you need to get for the three, the three stories, as well as the um, the additional. Um, ma- mechanical things on the top of the building, I think, right? Uh, parking, here we have um. Practically one-to-one, one parking place for each proposed dwelling unit, close to a fifty-two to forty-seven. Um, we discussed that a lot, I don't know if people have problems with the um waiver, granting a waiver for the number of parking spaces. Design standards, parking dimensions, number twelve. This really, if I'm correct, this mostly deals with. The need for the number of compact spaces. That's that's really what we're looking at here, because this, we don't have any site work construction standards to deal with. So can you explain that waiver for us?
There are, um, there are compact spaces on the on the property, um, and I can pull up a. Let me see if I can pull up my uh site plan here.
So what's the waiver that you need there?
Um, to allow. To allow twelve compact spaces as part of the.
Otherwise, we would need another permit to, we, or you know, come to the ZBA and the planning board to allow for compact spaces, which is a. Instead of nine by eighteen, they're eight by sixteen. So we really waiving the approval process to do that.
Got it. And that's what you, so that's included in the project plan and in the the site work?
Right.
Got it, okay. I don't have any problem with that. Um, design standards and landscape standards. This re deals with indoor bike storage for residents. And you have forty-eight indoor. Bicycle racks, correct?
Yes.
And by waiving this, we in effect have granted the. Design location number of bike racks shall be approved by the special permit granting board as part of the approval of the permit, okay? Number fourteen is landscape standards, dealing with parking areas, screening of parking areas. Can you bring up the, just bring up the um site plan for Belcher Town Road?
Yes, I'm gonna just pull that up.
I think most, the only place we have to worry about this is the neighbors, the budding neighbors to one side, behind it is con- conservation land. So I don't think this is a big issue.
We all see my screen?
Yep.
Yep, so, here's um the driveway aisle, and then there were some plantings that were added. Uh, by the dumpster area here, and we provide um the plantings here that. Or I I confirmed with our landscape architect, this this planting row would be roughly six to eight feet tall when they're planted. Um, initially, and the area over here is the wetland area that's wooded and and there's a um. There's some plantings that create a buffer between the wetland area, but it's, there's um, and then this is just seeded down into the um bioretention area here, so. We do provide, we do provide this here, on this side, it's it's, you know, but as you mentioned, it's the conservation area, so.
All right. I'm not, I'm not concerned with that waiver. Uh, number fifteen is sign regulations. We should, we should just be consistent with this, the same thing we're doing with thirty-one, the Southeast Street. And again, with sixteen, I think it's the same issue. Seventeen, we want to be consistent with what we just discussed on. And this, on the Southeast Street. Site, site plan review, again, speak up if you're, if you have a question about any of this, site plan review, number eighteen. We have a more robust. Process in site plan review, so that can be waived. Uh, hard curb cuts, we had the same issue on Southeast, we approved that. Wetlands protection, again, this all comes down to what the COMCOMs says when they finally meet, so we'll deal with that. Um, if if there is a need for something, yes.
We're not meeting until December fourth, and we'll be, um, so we'll be back here next week. So I guess then we, this would not be finalized until the twelfth, is that the idea?
Well, that, uh, yeah, these won't. These, uh, twenty and twenty-one wouldn't be finalized until then.
Okay.
But that's, I mean, it all, we have to wait for the COMCOM whenever they.
Right, right, I just wanted to tell you that we wouldn't be, we're not going back to the fourth, so.
The COMCOM, yeah. Okay. So that's twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. Twenty-three, uh, so the the build, the house that they're demolishing is a historic house? That's a need, that must be the need for this.
Yeah, and we have the sign off from the um Mass Historical Commission.
Great. Um, and then we've got the, for twenty-three and twenty-four, it's the same issue that we had with the.
Mm-hmm.
With, but with the Southeast Street, I want to make sure that the approval, you get the approval without undue delay, but the approval from the DPW. Um. Water Connect twenty-five is the same issue. Twenty-six is consultation with the tree warden, I, you know, I I don't feel that we need the tree warden to. To look at all the the trees, you've identified the ones you want to put on the. Um, that you're, that you're removing on the site plans, and we have some conditions that will deal with replacing trees that that die because of the construction work, so. I think this is fine, and a lot of the the trees are. Are on the, will be pointed, will be taken down, but the um screening is only to the cons- to the conservation land. Uh, development per plans. It's the same issue we had in the last one. That we've got to get some more information on. So I I, I think we kind of went through a lot of this already um on the waivers, Attorney Murray, so. Just, again, I, what I think we should probably do for the next meeting is highlight those that we have either a question about. And then the ones that were, that I'm concerned about, which, and I think the board is, uh, which we're concerned about and don't want to, not inclined to grant. And then have that prepared for the next meeting. And there's some information that we're going to get from um like on a couple of these, and we can build that for the next. Um. The next time we deal with conditions, but I don't. Unless people feel differently, I don't think we need to go over conditions again until we're prepared to do the final approval of conditions, and that could be. Uh, it could be, you know, you know, a couple of meetings from now. All right? Okay, so it's, it's eight oh three, it seems to me, uh, Mr. Gruber.
I, yes, thank you, I would just like to check to see if uh uh Mr. Gray was able to find the um. Find that graph that he could um show Mr. Meadows.
Yeah, yeah, sure, I can pull that up one second. Can you all see my screen?
Yep.
Yeah, so, have five degrees. You get a hundred percent uh of the expected capacity out. At. At zero, you get around ninety-two percent. At negative five. Get just over eighty percent. And this is, this is the graph for for heating. It looks like, actually, it goes down to negative twenty, and then at that point. The operation and ranges. I- i- it's not recommended operating beyond that.
What do you do? In that case, if if you get a, well, if we get negative twenty, that's probably not as likely as. What happens, it shuts down?
Yeah, it will shut down at that point. Yeah, we, you know, we designed the, designed for the design conditions.
Yep.
On the, on the project a- as required, um, so obviously, we're we're not designing for negative twenty.
I know it's the the HVAC. Um. I guess it's, it's, they have an additional um. Gas or electric heater that comes in for some of the uh the. More efficient air handlers that. Um, air exchangers, I guess it is. They have, you have to get a a sup- you can buy a supplemental system, but that's not something you're thinking about. If, when you get, you've just built this for twenty below, and if it is twenty below, people are going to be cold, they're going to be in blankets and.
Oh, yeah, I mean, uh, that that's almost a doomsday scenario, but.
Yeah. No, I know.
We do have ventilation units that have electric resistance heating, so the building is not going to be freezing. Um, in that case, the the those units are are to operate as long as the building is occupied, and they will provide. Heating um for the building, and in a measure, it's not uh gonna be the the full design, but the, it will not let the building freeze.
Mr. Meadows, do you, um, just give you all the information you wanted?
Yeah, and are are you saying, Mr. Gray, that that these Mitsubishi units have got supplemental electric? Resistance?
We have, we have separate, separate heaters throughout the building. Um, that are supplemental and e- electrical heaters, um, that are electric resistance, they're not. Relied on a heat pump, and then we also have. Ventilation units, ERV units that are providing ventilation air that is heated. Um, so that that air does not rely on a heat pump, it relies on electric resistance heating, which can operate. Under any condition, as long as the unit is still operable. Um, so that will provide heating to the building a- and to offset. You know, the lo- low-temperature condition, it won't allow the building to freeze.
All right. Hopefully, we're not twenty below.
Yeah, definitely.
We, I remember the last time we had twenty below for more than five days in a row. It's about forty years ago.
Yeah.
I was cold.
Yeah. Well, you couldn't do this in Minnesota, you'd have to have. More electrical resistance heating uh as a backup, but we're not in Minnesota, we're in Western Mass. All right?
Yep.
Any other questions regarding um the waivers? Or anything else? I guess what I would like, what I thought of doing, uh, Mr. Gruber?
Um, yes, I just had, I want one question regarding uh the timing of um. The, I guess maybe like supplemental or revised sheets, um, you know, drawings such as a Belcher Town Road, we had. You know, the the parking had adjusted as you had, you know, where it was presented to the board, just the timing of when those sheets would be. Um, you know, provided to the the board and and how those would be referenced in the um, in the decision.
Well, um, before we take, I, the standard answer, I think, is before we proceed to the final approval. All the documents need to be. Uh, need to be. Uh, submitted to the board. I anticipate that we're going to meet. Um. Next week on the, we'll meet on the twenty-first. Then we next time meet on this, on the, is it the?
Twelve.
Twelve? It's December twelfth, so I anticipate that on the, next week, we'll go through the conditions. Um, in, kind of do the same thing we did today, go through first cut and submissions, on on conditions. Um, and then we'll start the process of of um, and I don't know that we'll get all that done, and then we'll. We'll have the meeting in in December, where we can try to get as much, we can work through the final finalizations. And I would, I, you know, I think it's a possibility that we could finish this up. And I would, you know, I think it's a possibility that we could finish this up in the December meeting. I think that's a possibility. I'm not seeing a lot of, it's not a lot of controversy here, we just have a lot of process to go through. And I think that's the, that's, that's a real possibility. So if I were you, I would try to have everything ready for us on the, for the, that first December meeting. And to the extent that you can get it for next week, some of the, even the waiver stuff to us for next week, we can try to resolve it out of the way. Does that seem reasonable, Nate? Mr. Malloy?
Yeah, sure. I was going to say that, you know, there's other unresolved things besides waivers, the local preference hasn't been determined. You know, the marketing plan was there, so if not at the next meeting, the following meeting, you know, we could have a list of things that the board could consider. So I know local preference is something that may take time to discuss in terms of what's the right percentage.
Right, but that's part of conditions, right? That's part of a condition.
It is, it is, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought we discussed that in, in the Wayfinders was that we would, we would work with the town to request the maximum allowable, the seventy percent, you know, per the, per the, the funding agency.
And that's what's in the, the draft conditions, is the seventy percent, but, you know, somebody may want to want to amend that, change that number. A board member may have a issue on that, but that is on, we did discuss it, we may want to discuss it again, but it's part of a, it's one of the conditions, one of the hundred conditions that we have. It's, that is at seventy percent of the draft conditions. And, you know, so optimistically, can we get done in December? That would be great. That would be great. It gives us all a holiday present. If we don't get it done on the twenty, on the first meeting in December, where we have, what's the next meeting in December, Ms. Williams?
So the next meeting, we, we only have the nineteenth is what we have for December, and then you would be into January ninth and sixteenth.
All right.
So just to clarify, we have the twelfth and the nineteenth, and then the ninth, correct?
Well, we have the, the twelfth for sure, the nineteenth, don't we have a lot of?
No, so here's, here's what happened, just so we're all clear, and I think I sent a couple of emails, but maybe they were not. It wasn't communicated, or maybe it didn't resonate. Essentially, because this meeting today, which was supposed to be a half Wayfinders meeting, became a full Wayfinders meeting. We needed to reserve the twelfth for regular ZBA business, which means the twelfth is now full CBA business only, like for the town. It is not a Wayfinders meeting, because essentially the rest of the year would have just been Wayfinders, and the town would not accomplish anything on our end. So that is what happened. You essentially kind of got a bonus meeting today by having this meeting to yourself on the fourteenth. So the next full Wayfinders meeting is the twenty-first. The twenty-eighth is Thanksgiving, so that is, obviously, we're not meeting. And then the twelfth, we, as the town, need that to process our own applications, so that is no Wayfinders at all. So your next.
Four, we have four special permit or variant requests for the twelfth, right?
Yes, and so the nineteenth is your next full Wayfinders meeting.
The twenty-first and then to the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Okay? Still, we have a shot at getting this done before, before Christmas, so. And if not, we'll, we'll be going into the next, we'll be going in on the sixteenth. Okay? All right. Other question, you know, I don't know that it makes sense to start going through the conditions. The applicant said they hadn't seen it until recently, they hadn't a chance to go through them, so I don't want to do this without them being, having the opportunity to review it prior to the, the meeting. I mean, a lot of these are, are standard and boilerplate, but you know, I think you need to, you need to have the time to go through it, so my feeling is that it doesn't make sense to go down, go through the conditions at this point.
We'll be prepared for next week.
Okay. So I would encourage board members, take a look at the conditions. I've done that, there's a lot of them. You've got questions about them, just general questions, don't hesitate to call staff and, and get clarification. If not, we'll try to run through the conditions next week and make some decisions about the, you know, preliminary decisions about those before we finalize on the meeting after, all right? Okay, so are there other questions regarding this, from the board regarding this application, the special comprehensive permit?
Mr. Chair, do you want to just say, I don't know if there's anyone in the public?
That was going to be next, yeah. Before I, before I leave this, I was going to ask about public comment. I know we have fifteen people, we have three attendees, that's, it dropped off, we.
Yeah, they were here for Chutesbury, but I think they're a little disappointed, so.
Let me just take you up, Mr. Chair, and ask one question.
Sure.
With the parking situation where there's potentially only fourteen lots, and looking at the neighborhood with the street parking, I mean, it is a busy street to actually have town resident park in there. Is, is there any contingency? Are you guys looking at anywhere else for possible offsite parking? To maybe your adjacent building, would that be, would you allow residents to park over there? What is, is there any conversation on that?
Well, currently, the, the street does have onsite parking, and in conversation with the town, it was to be a more formalized sort of, you know, parking scenario on the street. I would let, you know, as far as, so there is, there is street parking there now. And, you know, we dealt with the onsite parking and the on-street parking that there was, you know, an acceptable level of, of parking would be provided for the, for the residents at that building.
So, sorry, do I have it backwards? Belch is, so the issue is not Belcher Town Road?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, we're talking about southeast street, correct?
Okay, then yes.
Fourteen, yeah, with the fourteen spots, and then the additional, like right in front of the building, I believe there's roughly, could be as much as ten, you know, ten parking spaces directly in front of the building on the street, is that, and then there's additional, additional parking along the road there as well.
And, you know, there was some discussion with the town, or there's, there's, there's been discussion at our meetings that there is some consideration of the town about doing some residential parking restrictions or, and I don't know the nature of those discussions, if that's gone on with town council, because they would have to make the decision to do that. But that, I think, Mr. Henry was, was one of the things that people are talking about is perhaps putting in a residential parking area up in front of the the building to provide additional parking for the residents of that building.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what the town council is, if they've looked at that at all. Mr. Malloy, do you know if there's been any discussion about that? Any further discussion?
Uh, there's been no discussion at the council level, but between the departments that would look at that, Public Works, Police, Treasurer and Planning, everyone supports it, it's just, it's a little early to bring it to council, the, the town has plans to, you know, repave that road and do utility work there. And so at that time, probably next summer, that'll move forward with getting, you know, a residential permit in place for at least, you know, ten to fifteen parking spaces along that section of road.
Because I think you're right, Mr. Henry, every time I drive past that area, there was, there are people parked in front of that, the old school. It's, it's not like that's an unused general parking area right now. Okay? Great. All right. We have no, nobody from the general public wishes to speak. If you do, it's the time to do that.
I don't see any hands.
No, I see no hands, all right? Then the next order of business is public comment on any matter not before the board tonight. Oh, before we do that, we want to continue this public hearing until next week, so continue this public hearing until the twenty-first at six o'clock.
No, seven PM.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. You saved my, you saved me for that seven PM next week. Thank you very much. I have, I cannot be here before seven o'clock next week, so I'm asking all you guys to give me that courtesy to start the meeting at seven. Do I have a motion to continue this to seven o'clock on the twenty-first?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to continue this meeting till seven o'clock on the twenty-first. The chair votes aye. Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Slovater?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Meadows?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll continue this to the twenty-first. The next order of business is public comment on any matter not before the board tonight.
We have no one in the attendees room.
The last attendee just disappeared. They're all gone.
We are a riveting bunch.
We really captured everybody's attention tonight, that's for darn sure. All right? Then there's, the last order of business is anything not anticipated, and we've already gone, in the last forty-eight hours, we've already gone through the schedule, so I think we've got everything on that, all done. All right, next order of business is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
So seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, which is not debatable. The chair votes aye. Was that a vote?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Slovater?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
All right, we are all adjourned. Thank you very much, and we'll see you next week at seven o'clock.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Bye.